All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. I called this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is April 22, 2025, and it's 7:07 PM. With the clerk, call the road, please.
Councilman Fai?
Present.
Councilman Musa?
Present.
Councilman Sedman?
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you. Please rise for the presentation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the principles of self-respect, honesty, and diligence. Thank you. All right. Do we have any community announcements today?
We do. Mayor, we have several listed here. First up, we have the Hamtramck firefighters are hosting their annual firefighter march in mass on Sunday, May 3rd. Participants from all over Michigan and Ontario, Canada, take part in the event. This year, the procession starts at the Hamtramck Fire Department at 3:00 PM and will travel down Kinneff to Joseph Compoe. Then proceed south, down Joseph Compoe to Florian Street, where the firefighters will participate in the mass to honor the firefighters at St. Flannan Church. They invite everybody in the public to come out and support the firefighters along with the procession route to show their support. Also, as part of the ongoing education with the NEZ, our CED department and director will be hosting coffee and tea and NEZ sessions. There's going to be two. The first is April 30th at noon, and the second will be May 8th at 5:00 PM, and that will be hosted at Cafe 1923 in Holbrook. All this stuff is posted on Miami Law.
Can I add something as well? It did come in as a public comment, but I think it's more fitting for an announcement or a community announcement. On behalf of the Hamtramck Beautification Commission, we are pleased to announce that this year's annual cleanup will be May 10th from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We will meet in front of City Hall, supplies are provided, and there will be some rewards for volunteers. That's May 10th from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. I'll pause for a few minutes to allow you to add "May 10th" from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on your calendars. Let's work together to make Hamtramck a more beautiful and litter-free city. We hope to see you on May 10th. Thank you, Daniel Berkeley.
Thank you. Any more announcements? All right, we move to proclamations, recognitions, and presentations, and we have the first one. 2025 proclamation in honor of His Holiness Pope Francis. No need to read that, but the next one is proclamation designating May 4th, 2025, as International Firefighters' Day. And the last one is discussion on request of Bosnian ballots.
Mr. Mayor, we have the clerk have prepared some facts on the topic, just to present it to council.
So let me just start by saying that we are required... we're required by the Michigan Voting Rights Act to do Bosnian. I'm sorry, rewind, to do Bangla. And the reason we do Bangla is based on our census numbers. So in order to have an additional ballot covered by the state, we have to have 5% of limited proficiency per large amount of minorities. So with Hamtramck, our population is 27,000. That's not registered voters, that's just our population. Bangla is 26% of that. So we understand why we have to do the ballots for Bangla because the 26% in the English proficiency is limited. So Arabic, unfortunately, is not listed in our census, so there is no box to mark that you're Arab. So Arabs miss out on all the benefits that anybody else gets because we're not considered Arabs on the census, which in reality, Arabs are 25% of the city as well. So if we were on the census, we would be considered covered under the Michigan Voter Rights Act. So we're not, so that's why we approved it, because of the large percentage in our city. Now with Bosnian, it's only 7% of the city. So that's less... that's not registered voters, that's just as a whole. As a whole, there's about 1,800 Bosnians. Not registered voters, just as a whole population, and it's not limited English proficiency. So those numbers alone speak much, okay? So with expense, there's more to... there's more than a ballot just to an election. Everything gets translated. You know, when we did Arabic, I had to translate the computer systems, I had to translate the ADA machines, we had to translate all the posters, all the forms, all the applications. Anything that goes out to residents is in multiple languages. I have expenses, what it costs. Just to have an additional ballot tested on our machines before the election, we spend a total of $25,000 on it each election, just to test our ballots. So that's three languages, so that's about $7,000 per ballot style. So we have English style, Arabic style, Bangla style, which costs $25,000 just to do the accuracy testing, okay? So that's going to be an additional $7,000 just for the testing of the ballots per election. Let's see what else. I think it's easier if you have any questions, maybe? I can answer any questions if you have any questions like throughout my... do you have any particular questions? Okay.
So I understand it's a lot of work on you, but if it comes to about the cost, is there like a way to apply for grants for such thing? Would they accept?
It's not a grant, no, because we're covered Bangla. Bangla is already paid for. The only way it's paid for is if the government thinks it's a necessity. Arabic isn't even covered for us. We could have gotten a grant for Arabic, and it's completely needed. It's necessary, you know, it's needed for the community. We couldn't even find grants for Arabic. It doesn't exist because it's not necessary. And it's not just cost, it's a lot of extra work, just in general. Maybe, okay, so if Wayne County constantly is waiting on our city to finish proof of our ballots because we have so many proofs. Every other clerk in the city gets an English ballot from, let's say, Wayne County, okay? Wayne County sends me my English ballot, says, "Does it look right?" I read it, looks good, and I send it. This is what every clerk in Wayne County does. Now Wayne County waits for me. "Rana, is the English one good?" "Yeah, that looks good." Arabic, I have to send it for translation, I have to send it for proof. If something's wrong on it and they send me the ballot, I gotta still send it back for translations again, I have to send it for proof, send it back. And then if they have another error on it, so it's a constant back and forth, and they're constantly waiting for corrections for them to go live. So the entire county waits on our city because we have so many more steps to pass these ballots. So and like I told you before, I mean, we're the only city, and I think the entire country that does hold three languages. Other than Michigan locally, other than Dearborn locally, Michigan, that does two languages, we're the only one who does three. And if you ask the state, even three is beyond what they even expect a clerk to do. So it is a lot of additional work internally.
Mr. Chair. So clerk is right. A Bangla ballot, we've been trying to bring in the ballot like 20 years ago. So we missed first census and last census from the BEPEC. We spent a lot of time, a lot of volunteer, go talk to the people, how to improve the census, and specifically write others, Bangla, Bangla, Bangla. And we did educate to the Arabic area also, please put your identity as Arabic or Yemeni. So after census report, I believe 30 to 35% only, the Arabic area attained the census recorded. Bengali area, I monitor their one, 70 to 75%. And not only that, to get the free money to do the clerk all those cost, you have to do their one and next census too. Now Arabic is, we are paying. Second, also, Hamtramck City losing, Michigan losing a lot of money because census, we not recording number correctly. So that's also, we did educate that time, we have to say. The ballot verification, before this clerk, previous clerk made a mistake, sample ballot, I caught it, and we only had three days that day. And Wayne County took all the ballots and bring it expedite with the extra hour cost because we did not caught the mistake. So she is right, she has to go through like a lot of time, and if it's anything mistake, it come to her. It's not Wayne County, I send it to you, you prove it and something. So just want to let you know. The cost not going to come from the grant or state or federal if you don't have enough percentage of the residents, not the border, from the census report. Thank you.
Thank you. And she always sent the Arabic version to me to edit it and to prove it.
And you know how many times I'm like, "I need this right now, they're waiting for me."
So any other suggestions or questions?
So you said 1,800?
She says there's 1,800.
1,800 residents, city of...
Approximately.
Approximately. Do you have any idea how many voters there?
It's almost impossible to find that.
Ms. Clerk, may I?
Yes.
Yes, around 400. They've been hedging 350 to the 450 last 10 years.
Approximately how much the cost there?
Cost, just to start it up easily, first year, maybe a hundred thousand dollars. Maybe it might be less after because all of the initial work was done, like the translations of all the computer system. But those computer systems are constantly changing and upgrading, and we have to update all of our translations. And it's not just written translations. We have to record audio translations for all the ADA compliance. So it doesn't just stop with written. And then also with the ballots, names aren't translated, they're all in English anyway. You can't translate names, the title has to be English as well. So pretty much the only thing that really gets translated on a ballot is the office that you're voting for and if you have a proposal on the ballot.
Yeah, I don't think it's about, you know, difficulty reading or translating. It's a symbolic thing to represent the community. I know that many, many, they never ask for the Arabic version, they always use... how many people ask for the Arabic version when they come to you?
We push it on people to use it, you know, especially if they're coming in with somebody to translate for them. And to be honest with you, even the Arabic, they'll come in with somebody to translate for them, and they'll still insist on taking the English ballot, you know, so...
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying it's just a symbolic thing to recognize the community. It's not about not being able to read or recognize the candidates. So at this point, I would recommend doing further research and, you know, looking for ways or revenue resources, you know, revenue sources that we can cover this if possible. Because I, we want to appreciate, you know, and recognize the Bosnian community, just like any other community. I mean, I was surprised they are 7%. I thought there would be, there would be less. That's a, that's a lot of people, 7%. So, you know, we can't take decision now, but I would recommend that we do further research and, you know, hear from the community, maybe they have something to say in the public comment and...
I did also ask, I did mention this as well, I have Bosnian employees who work the election as well, you know, I have multiple, I try to get a little bit from everybody just in case they're needed, you know? So obviously, I'm required to have Arabic and Bangla speakers at each precinct. I do have Bosnians who work, and I reached out to them, and I've asked them, "The past four years, you've worked the elections." You know, we have three precincts, and I have supervisors there. And I've asked them, I reached out to them, because I don't work the election at the precinct. I said, "Is there a need for it? Do you help Bosnians during the election?" And one of my main supervisors, they're the one Bosnian, he's like, "In the four years I've worked for you, I think I've helped one Bosnian." And I'm not saying it's not the... I know, to help one person is gonna, it's helpful, to help one person makes a difference. But you also have to take a step back and look at the full picture and see if it's necessary.
Rana?
Yes.
Is there a way to just do sample ballots or something less than the whole thing?
There's always options to do something, it's not going to be official. We could always do something. But like I said, we're gonna have to get those printed through the, you know, the same places who prints our ballots for us. I'll look into options. But like I said, like this ballot now, it's gonna have names on it, there's nothing that gets translated on the ballot. Even when I did speak to Wayne County, they said, "No way could we ever even pass it to this for this election because it's too tight for the election for us to even use them."
We definitely have time. I mean, it wouldn't be for the selection anyway.
Well, let's just continue doing some research and continue to look for options. And I would like to hear from the Bosnian community here, what, you know, what do they think about what they heard now, and go from there. So any other questions? All right. So with that, we move to additions and deletions. Do we have any for this agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Fai?
I'd like to have a call session to discuss personal issue.
Do we have to say what issues we have?
No.
So do we...
Has to be, so has to be a motion in a second.
I'll second.
So we vote on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can I... All these, all of them. We'll have another one, but...
Vote?
Yeah, before the vote, it's brought to our attention that whenever we do a session, close session, the parties that are part of this close session has to be out of the session, right? Is that the case?
Yeah. Well, depends on...
Depends on...
We can just start the close session and figure that out, and then...
All right, so we can go on and vote.
Okay, Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa? Are you, Councilman Musa?
Can I stand? Yes or no?
You don't want to answer?
I don't want to answer.
No problem. Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we added close session to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask council to remove Resolution B? We've run into a technical difficulty with the ship out on this, and we need to postpone it to the next agenda.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second? Hold on favor of that?
All right.
No objections?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Khalil, let's take it. Councilman Hassan, it's fine. Thank you.
One moment, we still got to vote for final. Vote on the agenda.
As a matter of...
Yep. Agenda approved as amended?
Do we need a motion to approve?
I'd like to make the motion.
I'll second, and then you can...
On favor?
All right.
All right. Okay, so with that, we have the amended agenda now approved, and we move to the public comments now.
Abraham Al-Jahim? Three minutes?
Salaam alaikum, good evening. My condolences to the Catholic community on the passing of Pope Francis and council, mayor, city manager, city attorney, chief, and clerk. There was an article and review, I don't know if you guys seen it on that, regarding the election, residency, and everything, everything else. So I think there's more investigations coming. Good luck with them. As you guys, last week, there was a fake Facebook account by the name of Muhammad Ahmed. So my question is, who is Muhammad Ahmed? Fake name on Facebook attacking Mayor Gallop, Chief Taheri, Adam Al-Harbi, the candidate for mayor, community members, and political activist. And the second thing I would love to talk about is Chief Taheri was known for his support of his neighbors. He fixed his roof and everyone in need. How dare open your mouth about Chief Taheri? He's a resident, and does the council support? Does the council support freedom of speech? Do you have the right to bash the chief Taheri? And does the chief Taheri have the right to defend himself and his city? And does the city council support freedom of speech as residents of Hamtramck? Do we have freedom of speech? So the attorney manager?
You can't expect answers, it's your public comment.
Just a public comment.
They don't have to respond to you.
Okay. So I think freedom of speech is very important. And if you live in a city and you pay your taxes, and I believe Chief Taheri, do you pay taxes in the city? I'm sure you do, you live in a city. How many Hamtramck police officers live in a city? I would like to see that, Max. And I believed, I've been in Hamtramck for almost 30, almost 36 years. Mark, the old chief, back in the 90s, used to live in Hamtramck, and now Chief Taheri lives in Hamtramck. He says Shahin of Dearborn does not live in Dearborn. Hider does not live in Dearborn Heights, the chief of Dearborn Heights. It's hard to find a city where there's a chief that lives within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ahmed Sharaev? Do you want me to take pictures of you?
Would you please? And nobody did it before.
No, I'm not gonna take pictures of you.
That's sad. Salaam alaikum. And once again, who's not replying to Saddam, I'm gonna stick with Shalom. Thank you very much. And by the way, and I know, Mr. Mayor Gallop, for the past two and a half years, we have a lot of disagreement about the city itself, it's not about Mr. Gallop. I don't know what's going on with me today, just tired. I'm gonna use my three minutes to send this message to Mr. Donald Trump, thanking him for having you twice. First, in America. Second, to be our leader twice. Sir, you moved Hamtramck from zero to a billion. I'm a writer, I'm allowed to say what I think is. And I hope this message will be delivered to the whole world, that you did well. Nobody helped you, you helped us. Me disagreeing with you, never been personal, I'm defending your rights. Whatever you done in the past, it was my opinion, without reading it, without looking at it, you are the leader. You deal with me personal as a journalist so diplomatic. You deal with all the hates in Facebook, social media, and everybody else as so diplomatic. For you defending our right, our religion, our freedom, I'm with you. Mr. Donald Trump, however, hate action from us. Mr. Gallop, speaking for billion of people, he was here in Hamtramck, speaking for Portuguese, for Bangladeshi, for, how else he, I was, also was here, actually live in the city, Arabic, African-American. So this is the moment for me to support you, stand by this, by my word. I am here to say, I'm sorry, "If there is misunderstanding..." "If I could accept your words, my father taught me language and religion, I will accept your words." "Dexaltetayik?" Thirty seconds will be enough in Arabic. "Dexaltetayik," from a sentence. "The one who can achieve this blessing, will not suffer harm." "Ashkuraq," second. Thank you very much. I'm a full support from the moment. An apology if there is any misunderstanding for your community and Mr. Dr. Amir Gallop. Let me shake your hand, sir. Thank you, Ambassador. I'm not expecting nothing from you now because it's gonna be overseas, so no benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it, I believe it says Paul, and it looks like the last name is a ski. Paul?
Yes.
Come on up, do you want to speak?
Thank you. All right, thank you, thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor, council, police chief, everybody else. My name is Paul Kuchinsky. I live at 3471 Evelyn Lane, that's right down the street here. And I lived in Hamtramck for over 70 years, so I'm well acquainted with what goes on in the city most of the time. I've been having a lot of trouble in the past, I mean, like I said, it's been at least 30 years. The White Star Bar has been a real thorn. I mean, it's, you know, you got shootings there, people get beat up, there's commotion outside all the time. I mean, it's on, you know, mostly on the weekends, but they're out of control. I mean, they're like, I've been at the administration here before, but they didn't do anything. And now we've got a new administration, a new police chief, and I'm pleased looking for some help. I mean, I can get the coalition from the other neighbors, and I've already talked to them, and they feel the same way as I do, and they ask me to come up here and talk to you, and hopefully we can get to resolution. I mean, it's, it's gonna only get worse. I mean, there's shootings there, and people are getting really ornery, and getting beat up and everything else. So anything that we can do to help out would be gratefully appreciated. So that's basically what I got to say. I thank you for your, I thank you for your time and police chief and ma'am, thank you all.
Thank you.
I would ask the city manager to communicate with you and see what the issue and...
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Laura?
Thanks. Yeah, that place is a horror show.
Yes, it is.
Hi, just looking around, I can tell, probably only he has served in any American war for this country. My father lied about his age to get into World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. My father died at the age of 43 because of Vietnam, after serving in World War II and Korea. Why did he fight? Many reasons. One of them, not freedom of religion, freedom from religion. I love my Muslim neighbors. I would lay down my life for them. They would lay down their lives for me, my next-door neighbors. But I am sick, and now that I can start opening up my windows, it's gonna get worse. The howling of the call to prayer, I'm an atheist, I don't care if you worship Jesus, Muhammad, dog poop, I don't care. I don't want to hear the loud, "Can you turn it down?" My mom had an expression, "Turn it down or turn it off." And you can argue about the church bells all you want too, but at least they shut up after a while, and they're not saying the rosary, and they're not praying in a foreign language, and if we're up to me, shut them all off. I want to sit in my house with my windows closed or open, able to read a book, to rock a baby, without having to hear, and when one starts, the other starts, and it's louder and louder. All day long. Please, for my sanity, for my neighbor's sanity, turn it down. It's the 21st century. Do you all have cell phones? Can you put an app on your phone that remind you when it's time to pray? All right? That's what I would like to know. Why can't you do that? Why do I have to be disturbed? And I'll tell you another thing about your friend Donald Trump. You think he's gonna protect you? He will throw you under the bus faster than he can get into the panties of a hooker.
Say less.
Well, I can see so much hate, you know, on your face when you speak, and that's not acceptable here. If you don't...
What's acceptable when you grow a father, listen? You do not bow down to a man or a god.
Thousands of people here want to hear that call to prayer. So it's all about democracy. So don't worry about me from Donald Trump. I can protect myself. I can protect myself.
Yeah, don't worry about that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Imam Rara?
Yes. Salaam alaikum. Harba, Mayor, council members. Harba, Mayor, council members. Manager, Max, Police Chief, Rara. I thank you for accepting a request for adding Basdan language to the ballot. Unfortunately, I heard the information from Rara. We didn't know the process, and we still don't know the process. But thank you, Mayor, and thank every one of you for support this. And I ask you, Sister Rara, to do whatever takes you to do, and every one of you to make it happen. Because there is not many Basdan people who speak English. Even you said that some people used to work for two. They are twenty or thirty years of age or younger. They attend here school. But what about those people here in the restaurant and their age? People, how many we have here? We, we came from country, that generation of my father, and my generation, our generation of my father. And now time, people grew up under communist system and the oppression of police, of everything. And people are still having that in their mind. Even though we went through the war and genocide, we are survivors of all of those things. And we feel humiliated on this, not to accept clearly. I understand there is cost. But we feel humiliated because of all of this, that we're building this community in city of Hamtramck along with all other nationalities here. And people in Hamtramck did not know about diversity in city until Basdan people came. That was, that was new word, diversity, came here. Because that was different word than tax, only black and white. Even Muslims didn't have a right to vote at that time when we came. That Ragazawi can witness that. May God bless him, bless his soul. And all of those people, they can witness that Muslim people didn't vote in this city for a long time, didn't explain to them a right of vote. That's why we asked to add Basdan language to the ballot, that Basdan people can see clearly what they're voting for and who they are here. We are proud Hamtramckans, proud Americans. We are also proud Basdanians, even though we survived the war and genocide. But we are proud to be Basdan Muslims here in this beautiful community. And we are part of making this community beautiful as everyone other nationalities. So I'm here to, I should probably ask, I should probably ask for extension because I have a letter to present to the Police Chief. If you give me an extension, please?
You have one minute.
Okay, thank you. April 17, 2025. Dear Police Chief Jimmy of Taheri. On behalf of both governing teams and members at large at Kamuwa Alliance, the Ministry of Spirituality and Self-Imunity, I would like to extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for today's visit to our corporate office on, for joining as, and for joining at the Forty Second International Interfaith Forum, performed on Zoom and Facebook Live, where panelists, speakers spoke on the importance of cross-cultural togetherness. Your participation as speaking as introduction to the world about our beautiful and safe city of Hamtramck and visiting our community garden is more than appreciated. Dear Police Chief of Taheri, we are thankful to you and to the members of your force for making Hamtramck safe. And especially thank you for funding Hamtramck Police Youth and Citizens Academy. It was an honor to have you to share the mission and work of the Hamtramck Police Department with our nonprofit international interfaith organizations. Your presence and commitment were deeply meaningful to our team. We value your commitment to community partnership and dialogue across faiths and cultures. Your support reinforces the importance of building bridges and fostering mutual understanding. We look forward to future opportunities for collaboration and continued engagement. With gratitude and respect, your brother in faith, myself, Imam Ali Fushkic, founder and president of organization.
Thank God.
Thank you.
Osman? Perry? Some, I can't, I can't understand.
You might need, might need a translator?
No, that's fine.
Hello. What am I gonna say? I'm gonna go ahead and say something. The language is not good. After the pandemic, I lost my life. I lost my own life. We're old people. We don't know the language. We don't know how to speak. That's the way it is. I see you. It wasn't.
Let me just explain.
Yes, please.
Mr. Waspman is here to request to approve on Basdan language to be added to the ballot. And he said the reason is of many of people moving out of Hamtramck, young people and adults remaining here in Hamtramck, that they need more with understanding of what's on ballot is. And also that our heritage remains here in this city with the Basdan language. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mark Cora?
Salaam alaikum. Just want to hit some areas. There was an article at Current Review that suggested, editorial suggesting that certain councilmen and other people should be going to prison for alleged violations of election law. And I responded to that extensively. I indicated several things. I was involved in one investigation back in 2017, 2018. I told the emergency council in the very same room back then that you are all being watched. You're being watched by law enforcement. You're under surveillance. Your family's surveillance. And some people took it seriously, some didn't. But it kept on going. Right I hear in my contacts with the AG's office, there are some people that just wanted to go after people at the council. They don't like these people for various political reasons, and they wanted to go after them. And, but several points I made in that article as a comment. I spoke to Richie Cunningham, who was, back then, we served the same public body together, the State Bar. He was head of the Criminal Division, Attorney General's Office. And what he indicated to me was that we don't release people's names unless we charge them. We're gonna cite investigative targets. And this particular matter, initially, three people were named as targets. Then six people were named, but one was dropped, four more were added. And some of the people added, saying, "Why am I part of this? Okay, how come we have all this stuff here?" There's a PAC committee, which actually reassigns criminal cases. And as I watched, as much prosecutor pointed, so the six persons named initial PAC, this current PAC request weren't named. Four more were named, the prior ones. It defies the explanation why Nessel's office had her own investigators develop a case of election violations for a matter of about a year. And then say, "Well, I can't do this because I'm prosecuting, propelling people in Arabic." Doesn't make any sense. You knew about it back then long before that, or this investigation supposedly ended in October of last year. Rana Faraj, who like stated, the investigator in charge of criminal case was taken off due to violations. How would she know that? This is an person, it's an internal personnel matter. Okay, why would she know about what happened inside the AG's? These are the AG's own personal investigators. How would she know about that? As I remember explaining, where is the source for that? We don't know. It'd be interesting to see an FOIA request to be answered that would indicate that what the internal communications were, the memos, the emails, at the higher levels of the Attorney General's Office, to why this case was actually turned over. Why was it not prosecuted? Why was it, why was it being held for months? Okay? And people have asked me, they says, "What's, what, why does Rana Faraj wanna push the Attorney General charging?" You know, and if that's, is there something she has? We don't know. But if we looked in there, I suspect it's because we have Democrats being targeted. And a Democrat, Dana Nessel, is sitting in. She may want to run for Supreme Court, for US Senate. And this is gonna damage her attempts at getting votes. As it damaged certain people running for office last time, like the president, presidential nominee. She lost because it's only three percent of the population is Arabic. So this is what's happened. And so there's a lot of questions I have regarding this. And I think, uh, before anything happens, I think Nessel's office has got a lot to, not to explain about how this whole thing was investigated and proceeded for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Hassan An?
An. That discrimination, that disrespect in here. I'm a Muslim. Don't ever fucking disrespect us, hear me? Atheists or no atheists. Ain't nobody gonna come to this podium and speak shit over here.
Talk to me?
I don't give a fuck who I'm talking to. I'm talking to, what's it called, the mayor. You can talk to who you want to.
Hassan, speak to the mayor.
Please. This is very disrespectful. And then, you guys wanna speak about the chief of police? This, that, the other. Let me explain something to everybody. This chief of police came over here to make a difference. And you guys wanna come here and talk about him? And I get a lady over here talking about Yemeni people, Bengali people, Lebanese people. You don't like it? You can leave. Very simple. This is America, the land of the free. Ain't nobody gonna come tell us otherwise. I'm sick and tired of people talking shit on Facebook. I'm right here. Say something. Anybody got something to say? Say it. Because you guys are cowards. You guys wanna talk that shit on Facebook? I'm right here. Which one of you gonna say something? Nobody's gonna say something to me. Because you know why? I'm not scared of getting arrested. It's a privilege to get arrested, especially when I hear people saying like her or anybody else speaking the shit over here. I'm sick and tired of it. I want an extra minute. These people come here on this podium. You don't like the prayer? Shut your windows. I don't like the prayer. Listen, I'm not religious. I drink sometimes. Does that make me a bad person? No. But I'm not gonna come criticize people because they got this or come criticize the Christians or the Jews and everybody. This is crazy what's happening. And I'm sick and tired of it. And on Facebook, let me say something to everybody. This gentleman's right here, put his neck on the line because Dearborn told him not to talk to me. He doesn't talk to Dearborn, and he doesn't talk to Dearborn because of me. And you guys wanna come here and disrespect these gentlemen? Or sit there on Facebook behind a, what's it called, fake account? You got balls, put your balls on the table. That's what you do. And I'm sick and tired of it. You guys wanna come here and, and, and just nonsense? Come on, bro. Wake up. Smile the roses. And just let you guys know, if the ambassador over here, you wanna sit there and talk about Donald Trump and disrespect like that, you should be ashamed of yourself. You got something to say, you can say it to me. Don't say it to these gentlemen. These guys are way better than me. I'm just a nobody. I'm just a nobody. Wait, you wanna disrespect somebody? Come disrespect me. Because you're saying it quiet, not, not saying a word. Saying they're disrespecting people. Oh, I'm this, I'm that. Oh, what, you can be whoever you wanna be. You can be a he, she for all I care. Nobody's gonna say nothing to you. Come here and tell, turn down the volume. Do this, do, don't turn down the volume. Higher the volume. How's that?
Okay, then I'll do.
Whatever. You do what you have to do. Listen, you say something, you get arrested. I'm on the podium right here. You're not allowed to speak. One word you say, you're getting arrested. Very simple. I'm on this podium. Keep talking. Keep talking. I'm gonna sit right here. Until, until my time is done, you can't do nothing to me. Just to let everybody know, no disrespect to nobody. But I'm asking you guys not to disrespect this gentleman and not to disrespect this gentleman. And we got a lady come here disrespecting us. Like we're sitting like animals here. This is uncalled for. You don't like it? Take a hike. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Have a nice day. Ali Alaweeh? Alaweeh? Ali Alaweeh? No? Naim Chaudry?
Good evening. Salaam alaikum. Dear Mayor Galib, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, Madam Clerk, and Chief, and everyone else. Today, I'm here to talk about few things. First, I'd like to address this issue that's going on for a long time. It's the White Tower Club. It's located 98191 Street. I live right next door. That club has been making a mess and chaos. I have four kids underage. And I get a call while I'm working that someone shooting, someone running, cops are running, or, you know, they're running to the backyard. And there's a lot of loud noise. I appreciate Mr. Paul came in here and spoke about it because this is a neighborhood issue. So I hope the city officials and administration, you know, manage this noise and chaos. You know, this is going out of control. The second thing that I have a lot of respect for the chief of the Hurri. He's a great man. He's running the city very smooth. I think, you know, we should not be criticizing him and making him look bad while he's trying to do, serving the community for the betterment of the community for the city of Hamtramck. I appreciate it. Thank you. The other things, I do see that seven percent of Bosnian is, you know, have right to have their language on the ballot, if it's possible. You know, they've been here a long time. So I'd like to request to acknowledge their presence, being here, their taxpayer. Even their margin is very small, but still they're part of the community. And I have, I'd like to talk about the resolution 2025-48, approving acceptance of the income tax E-filing capabilities through Innovative Software Services Inc. I think this is a great initiative because we are in a 21st century, in modern days. You know, we need to have electronically submit the things. So it will smooth our residents to pay the taxes timely fashion. And also, it will not crowd the city hall, you know? They can submit it through the E-five, through their taxpayer or their, on their own. So this is a very great initiative. I appreciate that for having this under resolution. And also, thank you so much. I think a lot of you guys are running again. And I, uh, thank you. I congratulate you advanced for running for the mayor, city council. And I think you have a great intention to run for the city. That's for good cause and good reason. You wanna serve the community. But I hope that you are running for, with, from your heart, from your bottom of your heart, that serving the community, that will benefit the community, not for your own self. I appreciate everybody for your time. Thank you so much. Salaam alaikum.
Is it Gali Ayash?
Salaam alaikum, everyone. I'm here as people manager. The chief has been here for less than a year. And he's done a lot for the community. We had never felt more connected to the police. We had never felt safer. He's done so much for us. He's been there, looking for everybody, supporting everybody. Bringing cops to check the businesses, check on businesses, and supporting everybody in the community. So I stand with him, with everything. And I appreciate everything he's doing for us. And we support you, and I support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Aiman Islam?
All right. All right, Salaam alaikum. Good evening, everybody. My name is Aiman Islam. Someone who grew up in the city, saw the ups and downs. And today, I'm here to say that Hamtramck can be so much better than what it currently is. Because let's be honest, over the last year, it's been absolutely embarrassing. I wanna use my time today. I have about two minutes, three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Two and a half, so.
Oh, great. Okay. So I wanna use my time today for a message for the community and the people. It's, as we all know, it's a city election year. So yes, please go out and vote. But please, 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 educate yourself on who you're voting for. It's time that Hamtramck deserves some competency. It deserves real leaders, leaders who don't care what political party you're part of, leaders who aren't in for publicity. We need leaders who leave their personal agendas aside and want to actually make Hamtramck better and represent at a national level. We need people who can get along even with the disagreements. It's okay to have disagreements, but be mature about it. Like, come on, guys. Let's grow up here. And I can say this, I speak for everybody. When I say I wanna see people who can go out and lobby and be able to get people to invest in this great city. Because look, if you go down to Zaccampo, it's a ghost town. People are going out of business. You'll see so many places for police. But then again, if I'm an outside businessman and I see the leadership that we have currently, and they don't know how to work together, they're not qualified, I wouldn't wanna invest in here either. Let's be honest. So again, we have so much time, we're at a time where we have so much attention to the city. And every week is just another episode of political drama. If you have any producers here, it's a future idea for. If you have any producers here, it's a future idea for a TV show, feel free to take my idea. We have people attacking each other online over their own views. Like, is this really how we wanna portray ourselves at a national level, with so much diversity? I wanna leave with this, like I said at the start, let's be better, do better, and let's represent Hamtramck the way it should be represented, and elect competent and educated people. Because if not now, then when? Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Abdul Hussein?
Salam alaikum. Congratulations, Doctor, to the new position. And I have some kinda problem, which I have, been having it so much in the last year. I have, I have tickets, I have letters, which does not include my business. They come to next door, and they give me the ticket. And this time, it's across the street, and the ticket on my store. But it's not happened one time, this is the fourth time. If you don't have people who are not qualified. I mean, this is cross-street. My business in this side, they give me the ticket, which has been happening like more than four times. One time, they said I'm renting upstairs in this store. And the second time, they said two addresses. And we have, the business is dead. Since the leader has been there, we lost more than 75%. And you guys need to do something. We didn't need this kinda meters. Businesses, they're gonna move. You can see right now how many businesses they moved. And we need some qualified people to work. We don't have something, you know, training people, they, they cost us so much money. They is like, I say like harassment on me. It's been going on. What's going on in the city? That's all we have to say, and we gotta thank Chief Police, who's been doing a good job. We thank you for it, we're gonna miss you, Dr. Amir Al. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? So I did have a chance to speak to the gentleman, and actually got a chance to look at what happened here. He is correct, that there was some errors in the past, and I think what happened is when he came in to get those fixed, we thought there was just, like, they just misissued, and what happened was the actual computer didn't get updated. Somehow, the registered, not registered agent, the responsible party for his business and the other business were co-mingled. His name is similar to one of his neighbors, and actually is deceased now, and I think that's what happened. So we're actually fixing that, so that will not happen again.
Yeah, I mean, we have complained a lot of time about this. This is an ongoing issue, and I keep hearing this from a lot of people. So, you know, like he said, it wastes a lot of time, it's the people's time, and a lot of efforts, and it poses a lot of distress to the people. So we talked about it many times. If somebody's not, you know, competent to do his job, or not taking his job seriously, something needs to be done. This is, I mean, I keep hearing this about this issue, sending the ticket to the wrong address, it's repeatedly happening. So we cannot tolerate that anymore. I mean, it happened to me, to my address, and I hope. And since then, we complain, and I keep hearing people, they, you know, people I come across, they show me the picture, this is my neighbor, this is, I don't know who this is, but the picture, the ticket came to me. So we need to do something about that, and like I said, some names are repeatedly mentioned in that, in those violations, so you need to investigate that, please, and take care of it. Because you cannot hold people accountable for everything but neglect what we do here in the city. That's unacceptable. The other day, tickets were given at 5:00 AM in the morning for parking, that's, they are that vigilant and that active to wake up at 4 o'clock in the morning to get tickets? That's unacceptable. So please, I told you about that, and it was...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, real quickly, we are fixing the information on this gentleman, like I said, his name was similar to his neighbor's name, and I think it got crossed in the system. And when he came to us before, we thought literally there was just, like, they mixed up the addresses, so we just took care of it at the time, but we didn't realize that registered aid, or not registered agent, the responsible party's information was wrong. We've identified that now, it's getting fixed. As far as the early tickets, Mr. Mayor, just so you're aware, on street cleaning days, our crew is out there at like 6:00 AM, literally waiting to go down the street. So when they post that, it literally means that it cannot be on the car, or any cars on the street from midnight, basically, on until after the sign's removed, because DPS is out there first thing in the morning. And the reason the police are out there ticketing them before is because they're trying to get them moved, so DPS. We keep running into problems of DPS getting stuck there, basically, for an hour, two hours, waiting for things to get cleared out, because people haven't moved their cars. So that's why it's happening so early. They're not supposed to be there at all at that time.
Mr. Chair? Well, I think we spoke about that last time, and we said we will start cleaning the streets from 8:00 AM, because that's, the city of Detroit does, and that's what all the cities do, they don't do it early morning.
Or midnight.
Or midnight. So why not start at 8 o'clock? At least they will wake up, they will take their kids to school, and there's a sign posted there where it has timing on their stuff. And I think we discussed that back, I think last summer, where we had this issue.
I honestly don't recall the 8:00 AM, I'm not saying it didn't happen, I just don't recall that, but the reason they do that is because, like, as the day progresses, things stack up, and they're trying to knock that out of the way. And frankly, there's so much going on, especially in the springtime, that they're frankly overwhelmed. So that's why they're getting such an early start. They can, if they knock it out, then they can move on to the other tasks of the day. Plus, it takes quite some time.
They knocked it out, but now we have issues of residents. Who's gonna wake up at 5:00 AM to move their vehicle?
They're not supposed to, Councilman, they're not supposed to be there from then on.
There's an issue with the parking laws, like, where would they park? That's the question. And you go to the alley and give tickets to, I mean, two people. So we gotta accommodate people's issues. We'll talk about that later on. Next.
Dominic Gross?
Mayor, City Council. I live at 2231 Faber Street, right next to a local mosque. I personally love the sound of the cullip prayer that comes in a few times a day. It's one of those things I really enjoy, and I say that as a queer resident of Hamtramck who is very disappointed by y'all's decision to ban the Pride Fly from city grounds. I love the melting pot that our city is, I love the ways in which we come together, and I am in dischaste of the ways in which different communities are not welcoming to that. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all for public comments, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we move to the consent agenda. This is a forward-looking motion with no discussion. We have Item A, approval of minutes from the April 8, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. B, approval of a voice register date ending April 22, 2025. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending April 22, 2025. D, approval, Resolution 2025-45, approving road closure for the Saint Florian Parish Strawberry Festival. And E, Resolution 2025-50, approving road closure for Oakland International Academy Field Day. Motion?
Second.
We got double motions and double seconds.
I got Mahmoud and Musa.
Okay. All in favor? All right. No objections?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have a public hearing, and we have Resolution 2025-46, establishing neighborhood enterprise zones, side 2, 25.
Motion? Second.
Now I need a motion to start?
I motion start.
Mr. Mayor, if you wanna just get a quick description, and then she can go into the comments.
I just wanna run through a series of five points to bring everyone up to speed before we get into any comments at the public hearing. So your vote today is what will establish the remaining four of five neighborhood enterprise zones we've been working on over the past year. And second point, in two days, that will be when we would consider applications open for the city clerk and the community economic development department to receive applications for anyone living in these NEZ zones, to receive approval from the city council, to then send to the state tax commission for the tax payment. Third point, you received in this council agenda the required true cash values of all of the properties that are included in these zones. That was prepared by our assessor, just wanna thank that department for their help. That essentially lists out the property values, the true cash values of the properties, and determines who's eligible for a tax payment if they rehabilitate their homes. Point number four is that now we will have an updated map posted on the city website, also included in this agenda item, that shows all of our NEZ zones. We're sitting at about 11% of the total 15% maps that you can have of parcels in an acreage in the city in NEZ. And then my last point is just to plug that coffee, tea, and NEZ series, again, that we mentioned, and Max, the city major, mentioned during our community announcements. This is an info session, essentially, that I'm piloting just to welcome residents to come and talk with me, to learn more about the program. I think there's a lot of complexity to this, and it's helpful if we can have one-on-one conversation about it. I've had a couple of those so far, and I hope that people show up and take advantage of it. Cafe Night 23 is going to host in that large meeting room that they have, and I'll be there at noon on April 30th, and at 5:00 PM on May 8th to take questions, and hopefully we'll see some applications come out of that. We could have more info sessions in the future, but it's just a pilot for now. We talk about this a lot, so I don't think you have questions, but if you do, let me know.
Any questions?
No, sir.
All right. Anyone wants to speak?
Anyone wanna speak on this topic?
What's it regarding?
NEZ zones.
I wasn't listening, I was outside.
No, nothing, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
He denied my right to speak. I'm a believer in religion. I motion 808.
Thank you.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, that's more on that, please.
Councilman Hassan? Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-46 approved.
Thank you. Now we move to the new businesses, and we have Resolution 2025-47, approving city income tax electronic filing capability through Innovative Software Services Corporation for cities of Hamtramck and Highland Park.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a mayor here to briefly speak on this. It's pretty simplistic, though. We don't do electronic filing, federal and state do. This makes it a heck of a lot easier for our residents to move forward with their filing. It actually should free up our lines and such.
Yeah, I mean, we've been talking to Innovator for quite some time, several years, and they've been developing this capability, and they've now deployed that capability in a couple of cities, and they've tested the program and everything. So this will basically be for both the cities, this will be an option available on the city's website, where, you know, the residents can go and apply their terms and apply. The annual cost for both of these, the one-time cost plus the annual renewal cost, all includes 25,000 something for the city of Hamtramck, and about 12,750 for the city of Highland Park. We have an agreement with city of Highland Park, where, based on which, we have an intercity agreement, and we process all their income taxes as well, and we get paid for our costs.
And so they will pay for their...
Yeah, yeah, we have talked to them, you know, once we get the approval from the council, then we schedule a meeting with Highland Park and tell them about it.
I do believe this is one of the resolutions that Councilman El Samiri actually wanted us to do.
Yeah, that's a good one. I mean, I get questions by the guy who filed my tax every time I go there, why Hamtramck is still not doing good filing? So this is a good strength, and I hope it will be approved.
Mr. Mayor, my CPA, the person I do my text to them, he's only can, I did use, me text to them, I'm trying to. So is there different ways to, can people can do it? I guess we can educate people that maybe...
I guess so, but I think this is probably for the first time, did you file, did CPA file it last year also?
Yes.
Electronically?
This year, he said he did it. When I asked him to do it, did you take this to the entire city, is it noise been down already?
There might have been some limited capability set up already, but this is a roll-out for everything. I've never had a CPA that was able to do it yet, so it might have been an innovative thing that they had.
Because, you know, all the residents can do it, all the businesses can do it, you know, once we deploy this.
People learn to marshal what they do with the other cities. My city is like two mates. Only 30 people, 30,000 of them. Other city, offer 200, 300. When we go to city clerk, our income tax, when we go to income tax, it can see 1% hanging around in the window. Two weeks ago, when we go to income tax, offer 30 people. Just waiting from the morning till 4 o'clock. They still following how to do fast.
That was the tax, you know, April 50.
People have taken it back.
So everybody comes in, you know, focused on that.
Yeah, everyone's rushing in, Councilman, at that time, to get it...
They have to follow, and what they do, the best way to follow it up.
Well, this will certainly help that, 100%.
They just wait for the people to make changes.
This should, this should help to alleviate that, Councilman, 100%. And, you know, hopefully, a lot of people catch on and start doing it, and then they just will not need to come in. So, but also keep in mind that that was, like, tax time, so everyone was running in at the last minute trying to get it done, so.
They have a 50%.
Yes.
We should prepare for build-out. We know this time, people, a lot of people coming, a lot of people show up, even at the last moment.
And what they don't know, so what they don't know, but if you put this sign, if the accounting, they don't have, oh, only Hamtramck, they can follow in the new system, only Hamtramck.
We do have...
If you have a new system, you're gonna save a lot of employees. You're gonna save a lot of employees. If you have five, six employees, you're gonna say, yeah, we're gonna help only 1%.
We have hired in that office, as you know, Councilman, I mean, we originally had one person in there, there's now three people in there right now, plus we're doing that, so we're trying to...
Three people for 20,000 people. Somewhere 200,000, only 1%. In Detroit, offer a million people, go to income tax, only 1%. I don't think there's a disagreement here, I think everybody's supporting.
A new system. So let's go ahead and vote on that.
Are you gonna take questions?
I don't doubt now. You can speak, you're on the public.
Why do you wanna know how much it's gonna cost?
25,000.
Out of which, 7,500 is the one-time cost, and then the remaining is the annual cost.
All right. Any other questions?
Councilman El Samiri?
What are you gonna say? Yes?
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-47 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2025-48, approving certain of construction contracts for...
Nope.
Sorry, this was removed. So we got Resolution 2025-49, accepting the landscaping lawn service rate of way parks and lot cleanup and maintenance debt of tennis lawn and landscape.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor, we went out to bid on this. Basically, the contract was expiring, we wanted a fresh set of contractors to see if we could maybe improve the services a little bit, and we set, we put out an RFP, John reviewed all of them. John reviewed all of them, and here's John to speak on it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, out of the, out of all the ones I got back, only one of them actually filled it out correctly. Even if I did the math right on the other two, there were so many things missing. So when I looked at this, is out of the seven that were there, one of them we let go, so we didn't want to go there again. One of them can't keep up, which is our current one. So I had a few left. So I took the liberty of calling from my private cell to speak to each one of them. One number was disconnected. One person had a full voicemail. One person didn't call me back, and the other one had a secretary patch me through to the owner immediately. Upon looking at that review for Teddy's Landscape, I look at their equipment list, and the reason why I do that is in case of a catastrophic event in the winter time for the city, what is the capabilities of our landscape contractor that's, you know, under contract? Because we have dump trucks go down or trucks go down, I want to know that I have somebody in my back pocket that I can call last minute. This contractor has a lot of equipment that we don't have too. So depending on the needs of the city, there's great, good synergy between the two where we can get things done that we need to get done without paying a premium for it. So that's really why I chose this contractor. I also spoke to this contractor and said that it's possible that down the road, we may consider doing some of these services in-house, and would there be a problem with that? And he does not have a problem with that. So he seemed to be really capable, willing to work with us as, you know, as a city on the contract. But that's, that's my logic on that. So I recommend that we go with him compared to what was submitted.
Okay, so, so I remember when we started in 2022, we had a company that, everybody said it was great, it was the best, and then there was a bid for 10,000 lower. At that time, the city manager, who wasn't Max, recommended that we stay with our usual contractor, although there's someone who bid for lower price. And when we asked why, they said, we know them, they do great job. So it was rejected by the city council. They voted for the lower cost contractor. Then the following year, the excuse was like, the new company doesn't do a great job, so we have to go back to our previous contractor because they do great job. And it was for 60,000. Now you are coming with a new company for 126,000.
That's for three years.
For three, okay. So what happened with that great company that we, everybody complimented, and we returned them after we?
They, they were a little higher than the company I'm recommending. About 10,000 more.
So how do we know that these people who we have this experience would be great, and they wouldn't be just like the one that was cheap and then we ended up firing them?
Well, I look at their employee list, the company I'm recommending has 70 full-time employees and 10 part-time, which is huge compared to what we're used to working with. So I spoke to Chris, Chris Donald today. I told him, I said, sometimes we have a crisis, we need, we need a lot of men, we need them here fast. That's not an issue because he does have the employees to do that. He's got standby staff ready to go, and he's used to doing work in other cities, school districts, residential, he has contracts in Hamtramck currently and around the surrounding area. He's got a very big coverage area, he's at any of them, yes. Like I said, the most thing I was impressed with was the equipment list. This price seems very reasonable, and the amount of employees he has.
So, so I remember that company that we hired for cheaper price had more manpower, more equipment, but they ended up doing that job. And then the compliment was for the current company that they, they know the city very well, and they know what they do. So what happened all of a sudden?
The, the service has deteriorated over the course of the year. I don't want to get into, I mean, I do know some of the backdrop, but I'm not going to get into it. But frankly, we were having reliability issues.
Mr. Chair, go on, Councilman. If this is a new company that the mayor mentioned, we've been having issues, why do we start with a three-year contract and now with one-year contract and see how they're, how they're doing?
We can always terminate. Every contract we have is terminated at will. So worst-case scenario, we can, we can get.
The good thing about a three-year contract is, is they perform great service, we have the, we have the.
Pricing.
Locked pricing, you know, good pricing for three years.
But we always have an escape hatch.
If you are starting this, you can cancel the contract.
And we are also looking at.
But they will do another two.
Was that confirmed?
They come through as for those things?
No, 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 we always put an escape hatch in our contract that we can terminate at our will. 100%. So, but as I stated too, we are looking to take this, we are looking to take this in-house too. We're working on proposals internally, laying out the cost, seeing what it would cost us for manpower, and seeing if it's more cost-effective. I suspect it will be, so I have a feeling we're going to head that way anyway.
I thought it's part of the discussion long time ago, we already brought some of the machinery to do in-house.
We do have various stuff. I mean, we have like chipper's and things like that, but that's more of a tree service. We do have jump trucks and.
We have trailers. We're pretty set on the trailers, we're set on a lot of chainsaws, weed whackers. We don't have like the lawn, the lawn mowers, basically, closed trailers where we want.
Or the.
Because when you cut the grass, you don't want people grabbing stuff off the trailer, then you, then you gotta buy another one next week, so. But we keep everything on.
It won't, like, if we go that route, it's not going to be a huge initial investment on equipment, because we got a lot of it. But it will be an investment, and else, it'll be mostly the manpower.
Any other questions?
Is there a problem if they leave the only one years, do you have some happening?
I talked to the owner personally today again and said, if something did go in-house, I just wanted to be upfront with him. I said, you might take a second position with the city to, you might follow up as a backup contractor, or a touch-up if we can handle everything, or we'll just have you a certain task, and he has no problem doing that. He says it happens all the time with cities, they go back and forth depending on their staffing requirements and budgets and so forth, so he was fine with that.
Do it, do it the one years. Is there a pattern? You're gonna continue?
Well, if he doesn't do a good job, he won't be here long.
Yeah, no. If he doesn't do the good job.
I want to see how, how they work.
Council, we're really cranking down on this. I mean, we're.
We have that one many times for different people.
We're, we're.
We have that one many times, different people, beautiful. Six, seven months, they give him very bad.
We can't, we can't control companies going up and down.
That's one of the reasons why I'd like to bring it in-house eventually, if it's affordable.
Our own people, we can monitor quality control. We can't do that with companies other than follow behind them and check. So at one point if a company's good, things happen with companies and people's lives. Things change. We can't control that.
And this company's been a business 31 years, and a lot of their employees have been with them for over 10. So I like to hear that too. The stability of the workforce with a company means a lot when it comes to quality.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Since two councilors tried to do the one-year contract, just talking hypothetically, if we do the one-year contract, what gonna happen? They're gonna, they might gonna say, no, they're not gonna accept for one year. Anything, you have discussion down like that or not? They're mandating you three years or?
Most of the, most of the contracts for landscape are longer if they're gonna, because a lot of companies are smaller, so the RFPs are designed for people that are going to make an investment, so if they're going to bid to take on a city or two, they want to know that they're going to have work for a few years. So a lot of times, you'll see a one to a three-year contract.
I heard they're calling for one year, but my own decision, opinion, one year and three years doesn't make a difference. If I do not like it, I can cancel it.
Yeah, we can cancel it.
Think the city is one year. If you don't like it, you can cancel it for one year. But if it's working good, so you need to look for a rate.
Actually, we can continue every year. If they're doing good, we can actually continue every year.
For three years, or we'd have to renew.
No, we start one years, they giving working good, we can.
So if, if, if we just do one year, that means we have to repeat the whole process over again at the end of that year, rather than if we just like them, we stay with three years. We have an escape clause in all of our contracts, so that if they're not working out after a year or a few months at that point, we say you're history. So it doesn't make sense to re-bid it out every year.
Councilman, let's sit here, let's have a fair try to council this way. Whenever they want to cancel the contract, and that's why I'm okay with it, they can cancel within two months, three months.
He wouldn't play the game. When they have a three years, they show all up. I know some people, when we have a sign, they put it like down. See, I have it.
They play the game?
They can't, they can't for other people.
Then John gonna play the game to cancel. And we go to Facebook, so we cancel.
Now we find out, we get, we get a kid to find out, go to the website. What can do three months to find out?
All right. I remember last time you guys provided us with some pictures of the, how bad that new company was. You showed us something, remember? Yeah, well, this time, I don't know what happened with the current company. I mean, we don't know, but it's up to the council to decide if we can store it and vote.
Councilman El Samiri. Councilman Hassan?
You put in a spot on. Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Don't forget, after one years.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud? Oh, Councilman Musa?
For three years, yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Resolution 202549 approved.
And John, we're gonna, we're gonna build into the contract that at one year's time, Councilman Samiri will be checking.
Report here.
Thank you.
I apologize, but who motioned and seconded?
I motioned the other.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so with that, we come to the end of our new business, and we move to the reports. I would start with my report. I don't have much to say, I just want to thank everyone who showed up tonight, and I wish you guys, you know, continue to come in every meeting. This is very good to have some community engagement, especially in the election season, we need to know about the candidates and, you know, to hear from them, and this is broadcast live, and public can watch it and know more about you as a candidate. I think today the list was finalized for the candidates for the mayor and city council. There's too many people, which is good. I mean, over the next three days, maybe some will drop out, and some will continue, and we would like to thank all of them for taking the initiative to step up and, you know, run for a city council or a mayor, and to serve the public. It's gonna be a hard task, but, hard mission, but we really thank you all, and we will, we'll be there for you, we'll help you to succeed in your job. I was last Monday, not yesterday, the previous Monday in Washington, DC, I had some meetings, some, you know, mostly private meeting in the White House, and I advocated for Hamtramck. I asked for funds for Hamtramck and a lot of stuff, and hopefully it's gonna go through a process, hopefully we will get something. So for you to know that even though I'm leaving, I did not forget about Hamtramck, and it's still, you know, the interest of the people here is still my priority. So, Inshallah, we'll hear some good news for, for Hamtramck, and, and I hope this election season will go well, and with many candidates. That means we expect more people to go out and vote. The turnout should be high, and that's something that we hope for. With that, I appreciate the community engagement, whether it's here or on the social media, and I call that we should make it a positive engagement, and we should respect each other, appreciate each other. When we criticize each other, make it a positive constructive criticism. At the end, we all, we're all here to serve, and we are here to make a positive impact on our community. We are not here to destroy each other, and I hope that we communicate with each other because sometimes on Facebook, when you don't see the facial impression, you will read things negatively. But if you are talking to someone face-to-face, you will see that things are not as bad as it looks on the social media. So I ask everyone to refrain from any negative communication, and I hope that we can all get together and clear the air, and I thank everyone. Let's start a new page and continue to work together as a team. And with that, you know, I finished my report, and I called the mayor Putin to start his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing much, I just want to thank everybody who showed up, showed up here tonight. It's good to see a lot of community residents that come here for our city council, so nice to meet you guys. Have a good night and be safe.
Thank you. City council report, if any?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
So, call for prayer. There was not the, only one Muslim council member was here that time. So rest of them, you know, others, non-Muslim. And one of the religious leader came from Poland that time to advocate to have the call for prayer because of sounds good, very, very nice, and religious freedom. So it was approved by all the boards. So, and call for prayer is there, and it will be there, no question. Per request, we have done some Holbrook, stick, put the restriction to the volume in the midnight, in the morning, how we can reconsider for that kinds of stuff. And, and I just want to let everybody know, no matter what, it will be there, call for prayer. And of course, we worry about other residents disturbance, like a sound ordinance, and we follow that, and like other, other events. Second, appreciate to the people running for council and mayor, leadership need to change sometimes, then we can see the difference. There is a lot of young generation not coming. Now they start coming as the good thing. This position compared to the other cities financially, as a councilman, how much we get, you guys know very well. We looks like a, like a 100% volunteer. After this council meeting, we might go outside and go here, what's happened, that warning, what's happened this, we have to be, after this also, lots of time expand to the residents. It's not the one, like, oh, I came here and doing whatever I want to do, and we have to answer lots of question outside too. Like Mr. Mayor said, he compared to his salary, two, two years before than last year, he said he almost he lost $40,000 because of doing the volunteer, almost volunteer service to the city of Hamtramck.
$40,000 a year.
Yeah, $40,000 a year. So we take lots of pressure outside. So I, that's why I said, congratulations to the new candidates coming and taking the challenge, and then maybe what I been doing 17 years, and maybe you come, you say, well, I want to do defense, and maybe it's really good things, so then people can get benefited. So that's all I have. And Mr. Mayor, if you have a third meeting in Washington, we want a please clear answer from Mr. President, $50 million for Hamtramck City, what you requested last week. And thanks for your, well, step by step. Well, first time, get a $50 million, go the quit, come back, vacation, get another something, you know, we'll take it. Thanks for your advocating power, and thanks for your, all the patience, how all those hate, hater attacked you, you took their one as a professional, what I didn't took it. So, because, because I was 17 years taking, maybe this year I get tired of that. But you only did the three years or four years. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate that. I'll tell you the amount of money as for. I'll tell you, the amount of money I asked for Hamtramck made everybody laugh when I asked for it. They said, are you serious? I was like, yeah, we need that much money. And I give them, you know, what we worked for and why, justify everything. So and I left some documents there for them to follow up, so hopefully, we will get something. I will not stop advocating and asking, even if I'm overseas.
I think he was responding me, my call from inside the White House.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Now, I think we move back to the second round of public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought we were... Okay, go ahead. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, audience, police chief, city manager, attorneys, and everybody of Iran also. Thank you to people who come in and join with us this evening. It is almost one and a half hour. I like to touch something, discussion to request to Abhassanian language. When I read this thing, it is my emotional. I told you before, in Bangladesh and Bengali language, people of Bangladesh, they sacrifice their life for the language. So this is the things you bring, try to bring it to us and we get the some collective information from Iran, how many peoples, how many persons is there. If it is very easy, I can tell them, approve right now, right away. But it is a lot works to do, but I have a full support, the people of Bosnia and all the people who speak different language. Secondly, the woman, young lady came in. She discuss about the call of prayer. I respect her, but the way she attitude, her attitude, her body language, I cannot take it personally. It is freedom of speech. You can commit to freedom of speech, but your freedom cannot disrespect my opinion or my standing. So I suggest to police, city manager, she has a question. Check her out, our, all the volume level is same. Sometimes maybe we made a mistake, but we wanna, whole city gonna be quiet and each other compromise and nicely gonna move from there.
Councilman, anytime I'm ever asked, I reach out to whichever mosque there's a problem with and they're always more than happy to accommodate.
And people, I had some list. I concluded all the people who was try to participate the election. Let's bloom thousand flower. We pick the best people of Hamtramck, they choose the best one who can serve the community. We have participated, we do our best. In the last 12 years, I was in the council. Good or bad, I try my best for my ability to serve the community. People judge me. If I do something right, if somebody has a better idea, we'll do. But please, don't make stepping each other back, make this whole city bad. If something personal, if something we can sit down each other personally solve this issue, please go this road. If you put in the Facebook, whole nation, whole world gonna see how bad or how good we are. I hope everybody understand, we are adult. We know how to solve the issue, we know how to react the issue, we know how to face the issue. I hope we are, we put in our mind Hamtramck first. Thank you very much to give me the first opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Samiri, go ahead.
Thank you for everyone come today, all make a meeting. I am happy to see everyone over there. I got a question for the city manager. Please, city manager, please, I have to follow in all the construction every years. The construction, when they did the alley, don't wait for September or October. Now April is gone. May is coming last one week. We need to start working for the alley. This is separate company. It's not same company when they working in the road. Why they hiding in the money over there? And another thing, please, every employees in the city, we have to spare the time. Everyone, they spend money for the time. We don't need people come late. I came every day in the morning. We know the people, he came in the morning. We know the people, they came late. We know the people, they don't care about the city. I spend money over there. We need people to spare the time. Another thing, please, we don't need a lot of confuse for the community. People, they have some issue, make a ticket is not from him, for different neighbor. Follow the people working right. Ten years ago, you didn't have someone to make the address in the alley. How they find out the person, they have some violation? Ten, twenty years, one person they working, they get some issue. Violation for the half street, they know was the address. They didn't have the address in the back in the alley. Now they have many reason to do the violation for no reason. Because some people is new. People they working one month, here look, come another people. We have training two years. Make headache for the resident. We don't need, we need to stop this headache.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, all the contracts that have been issued out, I believe, for the alleys at this point. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, but we've done all that. So we're just waiting for them to start. The frost laws, when did they come off?
Most, they're probably pretty much off now. They generally get lifted, but some of the plants are just gearing up, so...
It's just warming up, so, I mean, this is now the time. So, but everything's already settled and ready to roll. We're just waiting for them to start.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilman, thank you, everyone. And now we move back to the second round of public comment, please.
Is Abraham James still here?
No, thank God.
Eva? I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, thank you. It's gotta be two minutes.
Two minutes? Well, a minute and 50 seconds, not? Yes, Mayor.
Okay, please. The second thing, I want everybody to know, not to challenge. I am an official human rights activist. I'm not here to prove for anyone. So from that stage, I receive a comment from who's going to be a candidate running for the seat on the city council. He's just left. And I hope everybody has a courage in here. Come and speak as the speaker in Facebook against Jimmy LaTaheri as a resident, not a chief of police. Somebody make a comment, I'm not gonna read it, I'm not gonna make it personal, saying he has no right to introduce. I'm not gonna say a name also. Okay? And this is even the mayor, he has no right. I need the attorney here, not now, but to clear that for me. I've been my research that the law of United States, Michigan, called Hatch Act, Code 150, give the fully rights for a chief of police, a mayor, to act the way he wants to support by name, by act, except for two things, not funding, not using the city sources. From here, me follow the chief and as well you, Dr. Mayor, that you are acting personal opinion. I'm not here to giving you that right. That was your right, actually strongly you take it from the United States Constitution rights. Thank you, Chief, for that, for the job that you been done for the eight months maybe. And one day that you allow me, as, you know, when we do the citizen again.
He speaks to Mayor.
Okay, can I?
Thank you.
All right. Well, can I thank him? Sorry, I was gonna go to the room.
Well, you got 10 seconds to do whatever you want.
Um, just a little bit.
But still look at the mayor.
But anyway, Mayor, and Mayor Adem and Chief of LaTaheri. Thank you very much. Support whoever you feel to support. Thank you.
Thank you, all set.
Bye-bye.
Emma Lada?
Yes.
Two minutes.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you for wonderful job that you're doing. I really appreciate you looking those construction, roads, the pacing in Hamtramck. Thank you, Manager Max, for organizing all of those great jobs. Thank you, Rana, for your job too. Well, we forgetting to thank you. Chief, you're doing a really great job and this is, as I see, that you have among yourself some disturbances. I would like to invite you all together for a cup of coffee, break bread together, along with Manager Max, Police Chief, Rana, and have a great question with us, me and I, with our discussion of problems, but just make a friendship, friendly meeting, have a coffee, break bread together and that we move forward. So you are the party who governing this city, who leading this city and those young generations looking at you. So it's nice to see this young man, that he came to congratulate the chief for his good job. So youth looking at you and this is youth's city. Thank you. I appreciate your support, Brazilian language to add and that. Bella, thank you, Councilman Musa. Thank you, excuse me, first of all, Mayor, for agreeing to make that happen. Thanks, every one of you. So brothers and sisters, I'm a spiritual council and 27 years working in Hamtramck voluntarily and I'm the one who create the project for Call to Prayer, along with my team, that we are all been involved here, our churches, our mosques. So Call to Prayer has been here, meant it and let it be, so and that will be actually. So I know that some people have disagreements, but let them learn how that is and what better is for our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark White?
Evening, Ed. Well, let's shift gears and mention something else. May 28th of last year, we had the resolution that called for boycott domestic station of the state of Israel. In the one year that has almost elapsed since that occurred, we accomplished a lot through that. We made international news. There's actually a Times of India article has a link to me speaking before city council and the other public commentary people. I also appeared to London, okay? What has happened is, Jack Lou, who was a US ambassador to Israel, said that the Democratic Party split over Gaza was a factor in the Democrats losing the election in November, which is great. Problem we have now, Mike Huckabee just got appointed ambassador to Israel and he's actually encouraging the Israeli government not to allow aid shipments for food into Gaza, all children starving to death. Okay? I would be who, everybody here, to start lobbying the White House and Donald Trump and his administration and the people's State Department to go forward and to ameliorate the condition Gaza right now, because people are dying, continuing to die on a regular basis, based on starvation, based on murder, based on other atrocities committed against the Gazan people. We can't rest our laurels, in fact, we didn't last May, we have to continue further and I encourage us to go forward and continue to lobby our government representatives to end the siege of Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Hassanon?
Oh my God, I'm not gonna hit the table, this guy, she's gone. She's gone.
Two minutes.
Just wanted to tell everybody, I apologize for hitting the table, you know. This lady irritated me, she wants to sit there and speak about, you know, my people because my dad came in '74. Back then, people used to discriminate against us. Now, all of a sudden, in 2025, we give one person to discriminate because she's atheist. But, you know, that's something that should be addressed. You wanna be atheist, be atheist by yourself. But Max, you have to sit there, you have a problem, don't, you know, and she calls you, just call the mosque or do something, because she comes over here and then other people get irritated, you know. This is like, there's 100 people in here and she just disrespected all of us, like we're shit. It's uncalled for. I have spoken about when people wanna sit there and say they wanna sit there and come over here for the Christians, I speak about that, I speak about our religions. I'm not gonna let nobody disrespect any religion. That's something I'm not going to do. And when she is atheist, she don't believe in nothing. She can believe in Iraq for her, it's not my problem. But, you know, I'm not gonna mention the guy's name, you know. I'm not gonna sit there, put him out here. He's a good friend of mine, but, you know, chief of police is a red line, just inform everybody. Because I got my social media and I don't care, you know. I go on social media and I start 7,000, 10,000 people watch. I can promote it, make it 50,000, 100,000, it can get all the way to Yemen. You know, it all depends. It can get anywhere. Chief of police, the mayor of Hamtramck is off limits. Brother Mohammed, me and him, you know, we made demands because he had a heart attack, I called him, just wanted to tell everybody. So Brother Mohammed is off the hook, isn't that right, brother?
Yeah, I want him.
Hold on, what do you mean? I got extra minute. Brother Mohammed, what do you mean? I wanted to go to the hospital, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah? So I talked to him, we made demands. And then I, you know, I make friends with one person, then I'm fighting with the other person. Yeah, you know.
The payer, please.
I'm talking to Mohammed, it's okay, Brother Mohammed is all right, he's good. Just please, guys, you know, just the chief of police, he's doing a great job. He lives in Hamtramck, you know, he's not, nobody, he's gonna push over. If he, you're gonna tell him to do this and do that, he's not going to do it. Just get along with him, he's a great guy. For me to sit there as me that don't like the police, stick up for the police, there's a problem here, especially the chief. But I don't get along with no chief of police. Not, they're not here, but over here, this guy is solid, you know. He's like Iraq.
No hitting on the table, your time is up.
Excuse me, I'm talking to the chief.
Three minutes is up.
All right.
All set. That's all for public comment. Mayor.
Thank you and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We will have a closed session, so you guys have a good rest of the night and we will see you next meeting, hopefully. Have fun, yeah.
Should have a good boxing, football gloves, but I'm talking about too much.
Please mingle outside of the room so we can start closed session, please.
My name is George.